We're going to go ahead and call the order. The regular meeting of the Planning Commission for May 24th. First thing we'll start with is order and roll call.
John DeVoe.
Here.
Jeff Watson is absent this evening. Lee Brown.
Here.
Ellen Carrick.
Here.
Ken Hartsfield.
Here.
Vicki Good.
Here.
Jerry Penlin.
Here.
Peter Scanlon.
Here.
And Charles Schrader.
Here.
There is a quorum this evening with eight members present.
And if you would join us in a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the approval of the minutes for the May 10 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I had a recommendation for a change. In the last paragraph, it indicates that the understanding we left was simply elimination of a 300 square foot limitation, and I believe it would be more appropriate to indicate that a larger category was to be considered, or perhaps a limited limitation, but we're not necessarily narrowly limited to just simply taking out the 300 limitation in the existing section. So I would propose revising the last paragraph of the draft minutes by deleting the text, the 300 square foot limitation for enclosed self-storage warehouse be eliminated and replacing it with text saying, "Provision be made to allow self-storage warehouse as a conditional use in units of a size greater than the current 300 square foot limitation."
Discussion?
I'm moved that the minutes be amended.
I think that sounds more general.
Everybody okay with that?
Less restrictive.
Motion to accept, amis amended?
I'll make a motion to accept the amendment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes amended. Oh, you were in trouble there for a sec. Okay, public hearing. Item A, CUP 18-001/SPR 18-001, Woodland Park Self-Storage Conditional Use Permit and Site Plan Review. A request by the Woodland Park Saddle Club Incorporated property owner and M3XP2 LLC, Eric Smith applicant, for a 72,400 square foot storage and rental facility on a 4.75 acre track of land with government lots, 2, 3, 4 of Section 30, Township 12, south range 68 west of the 6th Prime Meridian, 19250 east US Highway 24, in the service commercial zone. It's quasi-judicial tonight. Now, before we get started, this would be the time for anybody to disclose ex parte communication concerning this, that we discussed any conflict on it, or if you want to be recused for reasons.
Mr. Chair, as I have a professional relationship with the applicant, which may be perceived as being biased, I find it best that I recuse myself from this issue.
Anybody have an objection about it? You are so recused. Okay.
I've got a question.
Sure.
Since we are currently working on the, doing a workshop on the zoning concerning that area, isn't it quasi-judicial? And should we, I mean, aren't we going back and forth, and we have already been talking about this property?
Quasi-judicial means that whatever takes place tonight is what you make your decision on, not previous.
And so, since the workshops have not been completed...
Mr. Chairman, if I may say, the workshop is on a text amendment to the regulations, which is legislative, not quasi-judicial, doesn't relate to a specific property, is unrelated to this application that we have before us today. The application before us today is a conditional use permit and a site plan review for a specific site.
At this point in time, I think Laura's going to get up and say a couple of words.
Well, I'm going to remain seated, if that's all right, Mr. Chair.
Oh, that's fine.
I would just like to go over the procedure for the Planning Commission tonight. So, again, as the agenda has been called, it is a conditional use permit and a concurrent site plan review for 4.75 acres of land within the city of Woodland Park. So tonight is the Planning Commission's public hearing on this case, and the Planning Commission tonight will make a recommendation, and that recommendation then goes forward to City Council. It'll have a first reading and an ordinance associated with it. Ordinance will go through a first reading, which is just an introduction of the ordinance, and then they will have a public hearing, and they are the decision-makers for this case. So tonight, this commission will make a motion, which is a recommendation to City Council. Just wanted to keep that in mind, and also wanted to read the section in the municipal code related to how this commission looks at recommendations. So the Planning Commission shall, after a public hearing, recommend approving the application and/or site plan, or approving the application and/or site plan subject to conditions or requirements, or deny the application and/or site plan and specify the reasons and findings, or continue the application and/or site plan until a specific meeting date and specify the reasons for continuation, or table the application and/or site plan consideration and specify the reasons for tabling. So there are a few options: essentially approve it, approve it with conditions, deny it, continue it for reasons specified, and one of those reasons could be you don't have enough information, or table it, and then you would have to specify the reasons for tabling as well. So, keep in mind, the motion tonight is a recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I believe it's time to step off.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Name, serial number, you know, all that good.
Members of the commission, Ms. Pellegrino, Ms. Riley. My name is Chuck Mahoney. I live at 674 Lucky Lady Drive in Woodland Park here. I'm here representing the Woodland Park Saddle Club and Board of Directors as the owners of the property. We support the action that's being considered tonight. The board recognizes that Woodland Park has changed in the last number of years, and that commercial development on that strip that we own needs to accommodate the changes that are reflected demographically, by the population, and everything else. We think that a storage unit is well-done in this area. We recommend this. We think this would be a benefit to the community with not only the quote "silver tsunami" that the courier reported three years ago, the demographics of the people that moved here, but even the yet-to-be-realized impacts of the Caris Bible College, and the rental market, and the housing market, and everything else. We think that this is a viable, and supportable, and sustainable business that would benefit the community, be a fairly low impact where it's placed, and would be a pleasant site in the gateway to Woodland Park. Any questions?
Just one quick question.
No.
Is this involve the entire stable property?
No.
Could you describe how you're separating out what's being sold and what's not?
Yeah, Eric will do that. We have a total of 23-plus acres in there, and what you'll see tonight per the diagrams and illustrations of just how much of that property involves.
Will you continue with usage of the remaining property, similar to what you have in the past?
Yes, until, actually, all the property is under contract, in different stages and different timeframes on closing. So our ultimate plan is we have property purchased in Divide, and about 70% developed there. We plan on moving the activities to Divide once it's funded by the sale of the property in Woodland. That's our overall Saddle Club plan.
At the bottom.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Okay. My name is Eric Smith. I am with M3XP2. I'm a managing member of 750 East Highway, US 24, Suite 202 in Woodland Park. Good evening to all of the commissioners, Sally and Laura. Good evening. This has been a project that's been a long time coming. I commissioned a study in 2012 for self-storage in Woodland Park. With the Bible College coming online, the Trail Ridge Apartments, and the other growth and development, I thought that a new storage type of complex like we've come to see in other communities was needed here, a storage facility that had climate-controlled storage. And so we hired a national expert to come in and do a market study and market analysis. He completed that study in 2012 on another piece of property that I owned, and came back and said, "Yes, absolutely. This is a underserved market, and self-storage business would do very well here, especially in climate control." It did not work out on that piece of property, so for the next three years, as Sally can attest to, I looked at just about every other piece of property in town to try and find a place that we could do self-storage, because, once again, it's a need in our community. And as the Bible College has come online, and, you know, has 1,000-plus students, and Trail Ridge, and the other demands with the housing and whatnot that we're seeing, it's become even more of an underserved market. That's when I approached Saddle Club, our group, and we made an offer to purchase the property. So a little history about self-storage, some things that you may or may not know, and it's kind of hard to read this here. So actually, self-storage started in the 1960s, kind of as we know it today. The industry is in its third generation. So the first generation was, you know, we built a garage somewhere. You might see some of that around town here. And, you know, we had a small piece of property. We put a garage up, and, you know, we had a self-storage business. Second generation was kind of an improvement on that, and now we're to the third generation, which is really, you know, very well-done projects. They're totally secure, fencing, they're architecturally aesthetically pleasing, of course, everything's paved, climate-controlled, access-controlled. They have other types of uses, such as renting U-Hauls, selling boxes. I'm sure you're all familiar with that type of storage complex. So that's what's considered a third storage, a third generation, which is where the self-storage industry is. There are about 50,000 self-storage facilities in the United States. There are about 3,000 that are built a year, so it's a fairly commonplace, and there's a lot of demand. I know in Colorado Springs, there's probably a half dozen that are currently under construction now. It's a $38 billion industry, so it's a very large industry. And of course, a number of the large REITs have stepped in, and about 20% of the units are owned by REITs. The other 80% are owned by individuals, individual businesses that might own one or two of these facilities. So a lot of them are one-offs, and not, you know, they don't involve the REITs or the big, you know, extra space and public storage that you see as you drive around the country. So I kind of went into the why Woodland Park, and I don't necessarily need to reiterate that, but, you know, we do have a fairly sizable market study that was done by a national expert who's recognized in this industry, who has done multiple studies in the last 10 years in Colorado that have been built and that have been successful. He feels that this is an extremely strong market, so we're very excited about the prospect of moving forward. Our bank and financiers are very excited as well, and we're ready to get rolling on the project as soon as we make it through the entitlement process. The other thing that I would note, as Chuck had mentioned, these types of projects are very low impact. You know, there's nobody living there, so there's no noise. There are no traffic, is very limited. We have a 72,000 square foot facility that's going to be constructed in two phases, but when fully constructed, will generate about 140 trips a day. And just to put that into context, that's 14 houses. So these types of facilities do not generate much traffic at all.
Right.
I guess the other point I would make from a utility perspective, we'll have an office on-site, and we'll have one bathroom, so does not use a lot of water or sewer utilities. So the project location, Highway 24, here's Safeway, Walmart, I'm sure you're familiar with where the site is. This is about five and a quarter acres, and this is where the self-storage project will be built. The Saddle Club owns 23 acres of land, which includes this entire area, so this will encompass about a quarter of the property that they own. Access would be off of Highway 24 and Troll Road. Swiss Chalet is right here. This is already a fully-developed intersection with turn lanes. So the improvements to the highway are in place to be able to support the development. Troll Road would be a private road extended to the west, if we consider Highway 24 north and center, not east and west. So Troll Road would be extended to the west, and that would be a private roadway. The city's wastewater, wastewater pump station, lift station is located right here, and actually currently has access off of Troll Road, somewhat paved Troll Road today, and we would improve the access point for the city with a new driveway for that location. So it'll be 100% of indoor storage, no outdoor storage whatsoever, about 72,000 square feet, 800 square feet of office. Retail, retail will consist of boxes, locks, those types of, those types of things. Climate-controlled, about 15,000 square feet. That's the initial Phase 1. Depending upon what the demand is, we could do additional climate control in Phase 2 with one of the other buildings. On-site management, so this will have onsite management daily. They will not be living there. This is not one of those models where you've got the apartment above the office, so, but it will be professionally managed, there will be people on-site daily. There are currently no professional, I shouldn't say that, there are currently no onsite managers at any of the current facilities here in town. So having onsite management, having folks there that when people come in and want to rent a place or to manage that facility, we feel is a must to be able to have a top-notch facility, but also a must to be able to make sure that the project stays in good repair, and we don't have things going on there that none of us want. I had mentioned truck rentals. We do plan to rent trucks, moving trucks, trailers, pack and ship moving supplies. From a security perspective, cameras will have 100% coverage, so it'll be cameras that'll be outside around the facility. There'll also be cameras inside the buildings that have interior hallways. So when you first walk into the office, there'll be a number of TVs, and those TVs will have the, they'll flip through the various security cameras, so that when people walk in, they'll be able to see the security that we have on-site. Of course, we'll have a gate. Everything will be controlled by keypads. And from a schedule perspective, we hope to start construction in September with an opening in March. So of course, you know, the current zoning is service commercial. This is a conditional use in service commercial. I talked about the access, about five and a quarter acres. It is located outside of the floodplain, so the developed area is 100% outside of the 100-year floodplain and the 500-year floodplain. So that is all contained within Fountain Creek, and that was a study that was completed in 2009 and is officially mapped through FEMA. One of the other items that I would note is that Centennial Trail that runs along Walmart, stops at Walmart, will continue to the north, and we will be constructing the segment of Centennial Trail along our property line. So there'll still be some missing pieces, but it'll be constructed, and as those other properties develop, it'll continue to move to the north and eventually connect to Safeway, and where it ties in behind Safeway runs up by Trail Ridge and heads into town. So this project will construct that piece of Centennial Trail. As I mentioned, the property will be completely fenced for security reasons. The fencing, you have details on the plan sheets that show the fencing. We're looking at a decorative fence. Of course, it won't be chain-linked or anything like that, but a decorative fence. Lighting will be full cutoff. We're planning on using LED. The lights will be dimmed at night. There will be no access at night, so you're not going to be able to come in at 10 o'clock at night and have access. We'll shut access down. Not exactly sure what that timeframe will be, maybe 9 o'clock. Restricted from 9 to 6 a.m. probably, so you won't be able to come in at night, and the lights will be dimmed. We don't need a ton of light in the evenings, or overnight, I should say, but it will be tied up with motion sensors, and they'll brighten up if somebody is on the property that shouldn't be. The other thing that I'd like to note about this property that you need, as you know, it steps down. So as you come into the project, down from Troll Road and you head west, you drop into what I refer as the upper lagoon, because this property is the sewer lagoons from the city. And so it drops down into, you know, one of the upper lagoon, and then, of course, it drops down even further into what was the second lagoon. This property, or project, will be in that upper area, and so it actually sits well below the road. From the finished elevation of the finished buildings on the interior, on the lower section, to the highway is about 30 feet or so of difference. And these are one-story buildings, with the exception of the main building, which I'll talk about when we get there. But all of the lower-level buildings will be a single-story building, so when you're on Highway 24, you'll be looking right over the buildings, because they'll sit so much lower than the road. Plus, the property is bermed on three sides, so that actually helps provide some additional screening that you wouldn't typically get on property that's right up against the highway. So that's another reason why I felt that this property lended itself to this type of use, because of the screening that's in place, as well as the access, of course, and the limited impacts from the traffic perspective. From a landscaping perspective, of course, you know, we're required to meet the landscaping code as it relates to the city's code. I do want to point out that along the trail, we've clustered a lot of trees, so we're trying to plant a number of trees along the trail to try to enhance the trail and that experience for the trail user. We've also clustered a number of trees on the berm that's between our property and the city's property, where the lift station pond is, and put those trees up high on the berm so that it would provide some additional screening from the highway. The landscaping around the building consists of some trees, trees along Troll Road, shrubbery, and then the remainder will be kind of a xeriscade, where we reestablish natural type of vegetation, low-water use, everything will be drip irrigation, won't be any spray irrigation, there's not going to be any bluegrass of any kind. So from an architecture perspective, we looked at a number of different types of architecture, and I wanted to try to bring something to Woodland Park that fit Woodland Park, but also, you know, kind of had a little different feel from maybe a slightly mountain-modern, is what I might put it as. And so what you see here is the front of the building, and this is looking south, so the building faces north. This area right in here would be the office, and it actually protrudes out from the main storage facility. This is a garage, for lack of better words, that'll be used for maintenance and the storage of a snowplow and other types of rooms and maintenance-type of items. And then entering into the actual self-storage building will be through this area here. The way this building is developed is it utilizes that existing hillside, so think of it as a walkout basement, if you will. So there's, it's two stories, but it's one story in the front, and it's two stories in the back. And so we're taking advantage of that slope, and so we're building in a walkout basement, so to speak. And you can see here how it slopes. We sloped the roof. The roof will be sloping from front to rear, but we have parapets that will hide the roof on this building. So we sloped the parapet to match the slope of the roof, so that we didn't have this huge building in the back, so that we'd still have that two-story, smaller type scale when you looked at from the rear. We have tower features on all four corners that'll actually bump out 6, 8 inches and be a kind of anchor, the building. Our proposed materials are a number of different types of metal and metal panels. I don't know if you're familiar, and I was going to put a picture in here, and a couple examples, and I didn't get to that. But, you know, the Starbucks that's down, I really wanted to do something really wild, and then I backed off of that. But the Starbucks that's down off of north Nevada, where Costco and Lowe's and that sort of thing is, if that's something that you have pictured in your mind, but it's a lot of different types of metal panels, different colors, and I went through a lot of different schemes. I thought that'd really be cool up here, but we tried to tie that earth-tone type of color palette that we're used to seeing up here. All of the roofs will be standing seen metal, so just like what you see on houses. The roofs will be green. I thought that that would be something that would tie in best with our landscape. So we did a massing model. It was something that Laura had asked us to put together. This is a bird's-eye view. It's not looking from the highway, obviously. You're up quite a bit higher than that, but this kind of shows what it would look like, you know, the one story in the front here, and then coming down to two stories in the back. All of these buildings down through here would be one story. This all slopes back from the north to the south. You can kind of see how the berms hide the buildings along the perimeter. We've put buildings along the perimeter to provide screening, so the back of the building is back, no doors, to provide that screening, plus we have the berms for the screening, and then that way we don't have tons of fence, just fencing and a driveway. So it's a combination of buildings and small amounts of fence, as you look at the project. These are some photos, I don't know how well, but these are some photos that, this mouse keeps moving, that give you a different perspective. So these are taken from the highway, and so this is looking towards the peak, see the peak here, and you can see down in here, this is where the main building would be on the single story, and for the most part, that is going to block all of the lower buildings. So that's a building that you're going to notice as you're driving towards the spur. So that's a building that you're going to notice as you're driving towards the springs and then the rest of the buildings will be down, lower below that. So that's looking from this direction. If you look at this massing picture here, it's looking this direction. This is, this is a little closer to the site, both eastbound again and as you get closer to Troll Road. And then actually, this is a picture going westbound Highway 24, coming home from Cowherd Springs. And actually, from this vantage, you can't even see it. You won't see anything because there's a hill there. There's some nice mature vegetation along there, a lot of large trees that are in the seat of the driveway. So obviously those are going to stay. So that provides additional screening for the project. So from a criteria perspective, and I didn't go through all 11. We provided in your packet and to the city, our rundown on the 11 criteria and how we feel that they comply. This project complies with those criteria. The staff report also goes through and provides their thoughts on that as well. Both, the staff agrees based on the staff report that all 11 criteria have been met. But I wanted to kind of highlight and discuss just a few of them. I think we've gone through the demonstrated needs and impact from before, you know, why we're doing this. Very small amounts, you know, the impacts for these types of projects are very, very small. Public health and welfare. One of the things in our leases, we're not going to allow anyone to store any kind of hazardous materials of any nature. There's going to be no working. We're not going to allow people to run a business out of these. This is just for the storage of personal goods. And so the lease that they'll have will forbid them to have any kind of hazardous materials, anything that would cause any kind of endangerment to the public, any fire, explosives, those types of things. Property values, the entire area that surrounds this, I shouldn't say, there's a little bit across the creek of residential. There's, behind the Swiss Chalet, there's some residential. But in the general area, this area is zone commercial. So it's service commercial, the entire Saddle Club, 23 acres is zone service commercial. We've got Walmart to the south. We've got industrial to the north and then Safeway. So from a property value perspective, we believe that, you know, this will be a high-quality project and that property values are not going to be impacted by this project. Talked about traffic, stormwater. Of course, we're required to treat our stormwater. Our drainage report addresses that. If you have specific questions about stormwater, it can probably bore you to death as an engineer. And I think we talked about the public hazards. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you might have. Thank you.
You mentioned moving trucks?
Yes, sir.
Where do you plan to store those? And how many do you see?
So the storage trucks will be stored along the front here and just in this area.
So you can't have too many of them then?
No.
Yeah.
And just one thing I would add to that, I won't necessarily mention the vendor and might take a guess, there are only a handful of them. But there has been a desire to be in Woodland Park for years and there have been many other properties that have been evaluated and looked at. Service commercial is one zoning district that allows truck rentals as permitted. And so this particular vendor is very excited to be in Woodland Park and they said that they get calls constantly to find out where they can rent a vehicle or where they can drop a vehicle off. So we're very excited. We think that's an added benefit for the community.
Eric, with this large impervious area, what would be the potential impact of runoff from rainfall further down, further down the pass, accounting to El Paso County and so forth? What's your analysis of that?
Right. Well, per the city code, we're required to detain to historic flows and also provide water quality. So the pond that we've designed provides enough volume to detain the difference between pre-development flows and post-development flows so that volume of water as well as provide water quality. So we meet the city standards.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that in your general application, I didn't understand, under the project information, it mentions outdoor storage for RVs and boats on the lower lagoon property adjacent to the self-storage lot. So we're not talking about that now?
No.
Is that in the future or no?
That is not part of this application. That has been withdrawn, that piece of it.
That piece has been withdrawn.
Yes, yes. Yep. So there'll be no outdoor storage of RVs, boats, trailers, nothing? Yep. Thank you.
I've got a question. A couple of years ago, there was a sewage backflow or problem. Do we have any map showing, based on your drawings, if it happened again, where would it that sewage most likely go? Because from my understanding, I believe it was, if my memory suits me right, it was 600,000 gallons of raw sewage. So where, where did it go on that lot?
Maybe Sally can answer that because I'm not quite sure. I thought that it actually came down and through here.
That, that particular incident was a blockage in the gravity flow pipe.
Which comes down through here.
Which comes down through there. And so the blockage ended up spewing out of the manhole. But if there is an issue with the pump station, they have an overflow pond area that is maintained so that if there's any pump failures, there's an alternative to contain that sewage. And I should report that there was no contamination to Fountain Creek.
Because I was just thinking, if you built this big, huge, beautiful building and suddenly it's filled with sewage, you know, and then...
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, mechanical always fails.
Well, it relates to lift stations, so there are multiple pumps. So they, I don't know if there's two or four pumps in this one. There may be four because it's a big lift station that handles half the city, give or take. So the reason for that is redundancy. So if one pump fails, it needs to be repaired. There are multiple pumps that can, that can run. And not all, if it's a two-pump, not all, both pumps typically don't run at the same time. They alternate. If it's four, then... So there are safeguards in place. The Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, they have standards and requirements for lift stations and this meets those requirements.
So we've done some changes so that if it's a manhole leak down there, it won't cause the same problem?
Yeah, the, a manhole issue was a blockage. So they're, they're watching all these, this infrastructure very carefully so that we don't have maintenance issues in the future.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a quick question. First, actually, an observation, actually, I was surprised to see the application, no reference whatsoever to use involving truck rentals, which I think was alluded to here. It's self-storage development. And the other usage indicated of outdoor storage of RVs and boats, which you said doesn't apply. But I, the word U-Haul appears as best I can tell in one drawing of a large stack of drawings. If one could ferret that out, I was going to ask the question, what did U-Haul mean? And I guess you've got the answer for that now. I found that unhelpful to me, perhaps others were in reviewing this material as to what it is we're talking about. Just an observation. Specifically a question I asked, to the west side of the parcel, what are the use and zoning of that, of that land?
So the west side of the parcel is Fountain Creek?
Across the creek.
Right. So Fountain Creek is actually part of the parcel.
Right.
So that's a buffer. On the other side is the county and that's just large parcels with residential. I believe there are a few units, residential units.
Are there any asking, I mean, I think the ordinance provides it for rear setbacks. It's unclear if it's outside the city it applies, but for residential zone lots, I think county zoning means it would be a 50-foot setback. I think it's indicated zero setback on the drawing. There is in fact a trail and an area, but it's another area which technically I think needs to be sorted out in the drawings here.
Well, one of the things we've discussed is we're coming, we're preparing a final plat because we have to plat the property. That is not part of the discussion this evening, but I believe that that will come forward. That final plat is going to, the boundary, the rear boundary of the property line is actually going to go to where the property line is today, which is on the west side of Fountain Creek. So we'll have well over 100 feet of setback.
Oh, yeah. It seems like you could get it, I'm just, but the drawings seem to indicate it's not a requirement. The drawings also indicate, which I gather is the latter phase of the project, along the back section, indicating it's RV storage units. Well, the staff had made a comment indicating that references to RVs were to come out. Those units are indicated in the drawings to be 800 square foot storage units, which I trust you recognize and the city added a comment, limit it to 300 foot. But all of these drawings have building sizes indicated that we're inconsistent with that. So I mean, I think every one of those drawings has to, would have to be modified, I would think.
That's a condition of approval and we, that was something that was taken off of this particular drawing, but was not carried through. And that's something that will be revised. So the other drawing, so there is no indoor RV storage as it sits today because 300 square feet is the maximum allowed size. I know that that is something that is being discussed now. I will put my two cents in and say that RV storage is needed up here. And I understand that outdoor RV storage is not something that the community wants to do, which is fine. I don't personally see an issue with indoor RV storage. We would like to do indoor RV storage. It is something that's needed and we believe that there is a market for that. We have about 13, 14 units, RV storage units that we can accommodate. They would have, if the code changes and we're allowed to do that, they would have electricity to each unit. People would be able to plug in their units. They would be heated so they wouldn't have to winterize their units during the winter. They'd be individually metered, so if somebody wanted to keep it at 80 degrees during the winter, they could, they could do that. They cannot live there. But it is something that we're, we would like to see happen. If that does not happen, that's fine. That building will just be configured with storage units, less than 300 square feet in size. I think the other thing I would comment as it relates to that, since you brought up Mr. Brown, is, you know, I, I'm not quite sure why the 300 feet, square feet is, what the purpose of that is. If I had somebody that wanted to come in and, you know, Walmart wanted to store their Christmas decorations there for the next season and they wanted 1,000 square feet, you know, that's...
I think the issue is that the, our, our ordinance mandates that that limit be existing for current situation. So for the present, it can't be something on the table.
That is, and it's not on the table. Yep. There is no RV storage indoor.
Two other items. Would you be prepared to accept as to conditions of the approval, any or all of the matters, the factual matters you've described in the present oral presentation tonight, so far as they supplement what I've seen in the written materials?
I, I guess I'll say this. The short answer is most likely. I probably have to listen to the tape to see and make sure I didn't make a mistake along the, I mean, you know, I don't know, sometimes. Everything I said in my belief is true and factual to the project. And so, you know, that's why I believe that Laura has developed some very good conditions on the project. If there's something that the planning commission would like to see amended or added to, we can certainly have that discussion. I think it's better that those types of things are in writing than just, you know, trying to hold me to something that I may have misrepresented, not on purpose.
One last question. I assume that within the current sizing and such too, you'd be anticipating boat storage and other smaller RVs could be stored?
Well, not with 300 square feet.
Well, okay, but boats and other things, smaller ones, is that correct?
Our largest unit will be 10 by 30. So we do have 300 square foot units and I suppose you could, you could fit a boat in there?
The reason why I was asking is how, how does, how does that reconcile with prohibition against flammable and explosive materials when boats and small RVs have fuel in them, propane and other sorts of things? How do we reconcile that?
So my understanding is typically in other jurisdictions, they do not view that as a hazard. Well, and the reason, and the reason for that is the logic behind that is we all have houses, we all have garages, we all park our cars in garages. And so if we were to take that same logic and apply it, then frankly, I guess we couldn't have any cars parked in any residential houses.
I understand. Thank you. So just to clarify, we've had a kind of a broad-ranging discussion about RVs and so, this has nothing to do with your application tonight. Your application tonight is strictly focused on personal storage units that, as you've outlined them, are within the current ordinances.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you would need to come back to us if somehow that code was changed to make it greater to 300 square feet because you would be interested in amending it and having a larger building and doing RV storage? Would you have to come back to us?
I could, yeah.
Or if this was approved for the under 300 square feet, but then maybe some other things changed?
I guess that would depend on how the code rewrite goes. If it's a permitted use within service commercial, right, we would not.
Yeah, okay.
Right. Yeah.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll be back.
All right. So my presentation, my name is Laura Pellegrino, I'm the city planner. My presentation will deal with how this application, as submitted, complies and conforms with the municipal code, with all of the relevant sections which I'll get into in detail. So this is an application for a conditional use permit and a site plan review and it relates specifically to Section 1809090V3, which is the use listed as mini-storage warehouse for personal property. It is for, an application for a 72,400 square foot facility on roughly, I think the applicant had submitted his application for 4.75 acres, but again, that didn't include the creek and he has since revised his application and his presentation showed an area of 5.25 acres. And that doesn't include the creek and this application doesn't include the creek. On government, on parts of government lots 2, 3, and 4 of Section 30 Township 12 South, Range 68, with an address of 19250 Highway 24, we are in the service commercial zone district. Tonight is the Planning Commission public hearing on this application, May 24, 2018. It has been scheduled for first reading in front of council at 7:00 PM on June 7, 2018 and for public hearing in front of city council on July 19 at 7:00 PM in a month, or two. This is a brief location showing the site, again, in the south, southernmost tip of Woodland Park. You can see, this vicinity map shows it between Cristola Road, AKA County Road 21, and the highway here. So it's bounded, those two roads run north-south on both sides of the parcel. This is a rough aerial photograph showing some of the surrounding uses. So the site itself, including the creek, is shown in a red boundary here. And some of the surrounding uses include the Woodland Park lift station here immediately north, remainder of the Saddle Club property here. And this is where they will continue to conduct their, they will move the arena to this northern site and they will continue to conduct gymkhana's and social events and all of the stuff that's and social events and all of the stuff the Saddle Club normally does on this property anyway, for the time being, until contract sells. Here is Fountain Creek, running along the west boundary of the property, in a north-south direction. The yellow line is the Teller County City of Woodland Park boundary, so you can see that the houses here that exist are single-family residential lots. The zoning is A1, which is agricultural, which is what 99% of Teller County is. So, it's actually not a residential zone district, it's an agricultural zone district, but the case can be made that it can be considered residential, so. So, this is where the 50-foot setback would come into play, for the rear. But again, there is, there's a lot of buffer with the creek included. To the south is, again, the Woodland Park Saddle Club, and this will continue to be used until their contract to sell is fulfilled. This is the Woodland Park, the Woodland Village Mobile Home Park, as it exists today. And then, of course, Highway 24, going east and west, both lanes. Across from the Mobile Home Park is the Quaking Aspens Development, that has been the subject of much discussion recently, currently vacant land. And then, we have the Swiss Chalet immediately to the east, and behind that, the Elk Grove Town Homes, so higher density. This is Trall Road, as the applicant stated, which is, will be a connection. Busby's, and of course, another enclave of Teller County jurisdiction. This is the Peak View RV Park, and that is the surrounding uses. This is the surrounding zoning, as it exists. You can see the deep purple is the service commercial zone district. Our site lies right in the middle of that zone district. To the south is Walmart, and all the developments proposed within Walmart. It is a PUD, so it is specifically created for this, the types of developments that are proposed there. Immediately to the east is community commercial, this light pink, or this fuchsia, if you recall fuchsia, properties, and that would include the Swiss Chalet and Busby's and those types of developments. Multifamily suburban is the, is that mustard? Elk Grove? Properties, and again, Elk Grove Town Homes are an example of some of the development that's there. And SR is the suburban residential zone district, our single-family zone district, and neighborhood commercial down here, and this is Morning Sun Drive. So, that's an idea, and of course, everything in white is the Teller County zoning, which is A1, and that's the boundary. So, this is a Google image, a street view taken from the eastbound lane of Highway 24, looking northwest over the site. So, this is the site where this proposed development will occur. Here is the lift station, that's owned by the city, and that cluster of trees just at the corner of Trall Road and Highway 24. This is the view you would get, and if, if you can take a look, it's hard to see, because the power lines are kind of right in front of it and reflecting some light. But this is a one-story building, and this is typical of what you would see in this area, as presented by this developer, in terms of the impact and what you would see from the eastbound lane of the highway. This is also, if, if you recall in staff's recommendation, we are asking for berming along this section of the highway, with CDOT approval, of course, and some planting of trees to further mitigate this view. So, this is where we would hope to see some, some additional landscaping. This is a view, again, a street view from Google Earth, showing the intersection of Trall Road and Highway 24. You can see the Swiss Chalet right here, and so this is looking south, southwest. And again, you can see the site far, it's, it's fairly far in the distance here, and you can see the trees that exist on the site, and we'd hope to get some trees in this gap, right here on the west side of those power lines. So, this gives you an idea of how far away and how tucked into the creek and the berms and the landscape this development would be. This gives you an idea of some of the surrounding structures. So, the nearest structure is a mobile home that's approximately 167 feet to the southeast of the site. The Swiss Chalet and the residents associated with the Swiss Chalet is 376 feet across the highway from the closest proposed building. The lift station is 85 feet away, and the homes in Teller County, for instance, are 426 and 506 feet away, from the edge of the proposed location of some of these buildings. Again, this is the site plan. This shows the boundaries, the same as the applicant had shown, and this does include the creek. So, this is a general layout of the buildings. I just wanted to point out that, looking at this site plan, when I first looked at this, I thought that this was the layout of the roof. So, this was a shed roof draining that way, this was a shed roof draining this way, this was a shed roof draining that way, this was a little gable roof that he put inside, again, draining this way and this way, a little drainage. So, I thought that he was providing some variation in that roof line, but then when he submitted his massing model, he shows one solid, long gable roof going from this end to this end. And so, he said that, the applicant clarified that those are the floor plan layouts for the units. However, I would think that that's a good design for a roof variation schematic, but at any rate, we appreciate the gable that the applicant is providing, as shown in his massing model, and staff didn't ask for any changes to the roof. But there was some confusion with that. Wanted to indicate the heavy dashed line is the phasing line for this project, so Phase 1 will consist of these, this series of buildings, the main office building, and this facility right here. Phase 2 will include another large mini storage, and then along the perimeter, these buildings here. Phase 1 will also include the drainage and all of the landscaping, so all of that will be done. We did not receive a timeline for...
Just to clarify, the berms that are around the lower part of this picture, are those part of the initial phase, even though the buildings aren't structured, they're structured there yet?
The next one shows the berming and the grading, and let's get there right now. So, this is an idea of some of the building footprints that we're going to be looking at, both phases, and again, the phases are divided pretty much right here. And this shows you the berming. So, here is the berming that the applicant had discussed, and they're going to plant some trees here. Here is some berming that comes up, and then a little hill top that comes here that does mitigate some of the view, and then there is some berming along here. This is the drainage detention pond. Everything will drain to here, and then drain off the site per historic flows. So, this gives you an idea of some of the berming that exists, and of course, there's berming along the creek, too, and this, this trail is, is raised quite a bit above the This is the lighting plan, the photometric plan that was submitted by the applicant. Everything in green is a wall pack, and I know it's hard to see, but I hope the application that was submitted with your package shows a, a better image. All the lights are downcast, fully shielded. Everything in green is going to be a wall pack, wall-mounted. They have 61 wall-mounted lights. Staff is recommending, and the applicant even proposed, that they be motion-controlled. Everything in this mustard color, there's four of them, will be a pole-mounted light, fully downcast and shielded, again, as will be this one. Same design, just a few different specifications. Staff is recommending that the height of a pole, from the ground to the top of any pole, is 20 feet, so the applicant will be held to that standard. And then, this is a rough color-added schematic, showing some of the landscaping. As the applicant had stated, they're looking at ponderosa pine trees, which staff totally agrees with. They're looking at along the creek, along this edge, and then a few in the front. And then more shrubs and extensive landscaping along the entrance, which is fine. Most of this will be natural seed and/or rock and mulch throughout. The blue line is the fence that they're proposing. They showed the gate, and they showed some fence panels. They don't identify what the material is, they call them pickets. I would imagine that's a good question for the applicant to confirm, but are those going to be iron? So, that's a good question to ask the applicant, I'm not sure. They don't identify the material. But they are six-foot-high fences. Some of the buildings themselves will act as a barrier, and then the fence will connect, so that there is no potential entrance onto the site. They are looking at two signs. The signs are not approved with this application and are approved via separate permit, but just so you know, it'll be a small monument sign as you enter the site, and they're looking at a pole sign that will meet all of our standards for a pole sign here on the property. You've seen these before, and as the applicant has stated, they're going to be varieties of different panel systems, different types of texture in terms of the, the look and the rust color and the yellow color and the corrugated kind of metal finish on some of these. The tower elements on the four corners, the applicant forgot to mention those, those provide some architectural features that give it some distinction, some articulation, and enhance it, as do the angled roofs and the canopies. Staff has no objection to any of the materials proposed, but would like to work with the applicant to nail those down. They were proposing to submit a sample board for tonight, but that wasn't ready in time, but the applicant did provide a brief overview of some of the materials that they will be using. They also, I believe, will be using some stucco panel with some texture, although you wouldn't notice the texture from the highway. And then, they did provide an image of the massing model, which was in your staff report, and again, some of those roofs, they're showing, it's just a solid green block, but again, there will be seams in those roofs. All right, so staff did a complete review and analysis of the application as submitted, pursuant to our municipal code. We also sent out the application to various agencies, both internal and external. Internally, we sent it to our utilities department, our public works department, to the police, and to the building department. We received comments back from utilities and public works, and they had comments in terms of updates to the site plans. All of those comments were incorporated in the conditions that are in our recommendation for site plan amendments. The police and building department did not comment on the application. If you do not comment on the referral, we consider that okay, no concerns. We did send it out to the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, IRE, Black Hills, Baja, CDOT, and Century Link. CDOT responded that they are swamped and were not able to look at the application in time. I did send them the staff report with our conditions. Our conditions simply state, you must meet all CDOT requirements. If CDOT disagrees with the applicant in terms of the axel, decel, decel lanes or any improvements necessary to the highway, they will come back with written comments, hopefully before council, and the applicant will be subject to those conditions. So, that was how we dealt with that. IRE is pretty much letting us know that they have power lines out there, and that they'll work with the applicant to do, to do, to deal with them, however the applicant needs to or wants to, to get him power to his site. We did do full public notice. We sent out adjacent property owner notices to everybody within 150 feet and even a little bit more on the other side of the highway of this proposed development. We did onsite posters, we did four of them, all around the site, so there's a poster that's actually on the fence next to the Mobile Home Park. And then, we did publish tonight's hearing in the Pike's Peak Courier, and I hope people read the Courier. So, I did not receive any phone calls, any comments. I did show the application to a few people that happened to be in the office and were inquiring about it, but did not receive anything in writing regarding concerns about this particular application. And just to reiterate, we are in the service commercial zone district, which is Section 1822 of our zoning district. Section 1822 is intended to provide commercial activity serving the entire community, both local and regional community, including retail, service, and office with large parking areas along a major transportation corridor, with critical high priority consideration given to design, access, control, and corridor improvements. So, what I've done here is I've listed all of the potential permitted uses that are allowed in the service commercial zone district. These are permitted with simply a site plan that is submitted to city staff, and staff would administratively review these applications for uses, and there we see the truck and trailer rental use listed as an outright permitted use, and the applicant has shown a small area of his parking lot for that type of use. And the approval for that would be in the site plan that would be approved with the conditional use. So, all of the conditional uses allowed in the service commercial zone district I've listed here, things like an RV park or campground is a conditional use, and the SC, a dog kennel, carpentry shops, auto repair shops, mobile home sales, contractor services. You can see a lot of these are heavy, intensive uses, and there we see mini storage warehouse. So, the service commercial zone district does have some limitations. Maximum height of any building is 35 feet. It has to have a 50-foot front, a zero-foot rear, or as Mr. Brown had commented, 50-foot rear adjacent to residential, and the sides are 15 feet from the property line. It has to have a 50-foot minimum frontage, that really is for subdivision purposes, but it meets this requirement anyway. Parking, it complies with the alternative parking plan that indicates adequate provision of parking. They are proposing fencing and shrubbery, and that does comply with that section of the municipal code. There are two freestanding signs that they are proposing, and those will require a separate permit for approval. They will be providing what is necessary for sidewalk needs. Even though there will be no sidewalk built adjacent to this, there is a, at least a minimum of 100-foot frontage along the right-of-way, and that fee in lieu for that length of sidewalk will be submitted by the applicant. And the applicant has proposed landscaping, which does meet the minimum 25% of the lot site. So, it complies with all of these service commercial zone district provisions. With any conditional use permit, we also look at 11 criteria related from need. Staff does feel that there is a need. We have not seen the market study that he discussed in his application, but we do see a need for mini storage warehouse, anyway. Public health and welfare, the staff does not believe there's any impact to public health and welfare if this development is, as proposed, is moved. Staff does not believe there are any impacts, negative impacts to property values. As a matter of fact, development of this site will probably increase property values in the area. It does, as designed, harmonize with the surrounding land uses, and any new land uses that come in in the future will have to harmonize with it. It does comply with the city comprehensive plan and the policies in that plan. It complies with the city regulations with traffic, drainage, water, sewer, and wastewater, and hazard mitigation. There are no hazards on the site, and they are not impacting the creek in any way, and staff does believe it complies as proposed with our architectural and design guidelines. With the site plan review, we look at many of the same things, just a different standard of the municipal code. Again, we looked at our community plan and our trails and open space plan, and any other plans that may have an impact here, which would have, the only other plan would be the highway access control plan, which it has a permit for. We looked at all the city regulations related to grading, grading, erosion, control, design, parking, tree retention, which there are not many trees on the site, I'm not even sure if there is one tree on the site. We looked at our lighting requirements, layout, the site layout, the massing, the architectural standards. We looked at the traffic impact proposed. We looked at the topography, the soils, the drainage, environmental hazards and/or features, water, sewer, wastewater, air quality issues, fire, safety hazards, and compatibility. Staff does find that it meets and complies with all of the site plan review standards in our municipal code. So, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit and the site plan review, subject to the following conditions. And I didn't write them all out here, but they are on your staff report on page 11, and the first condition, there are only two conditions. The first condition is related to the applicant making revisions to the site plan as submitted. Staff is asking that these revisions be made to the site plan no later than June 29, so that they can be updated and presented to council prior to their public hearing. So, a lot of the, and I'm not going to read through them, but a lot of the changes are things like, update that legal description... things like, update that legal description so that you include the creek, insert all the conditions in point number two in the box on the first page, label the city boundary show phasing throughout, denote property dimensions, show area limits, those types of minutia. So then the second condition that staff has, is imposing, or is recommending, is that this conditional use permit and site plan review be approved, subject to the following conditions. And I am going to read each one of these conditions for the record? Or should I summarize them?
Please summarize.
Please summarize. All right. The first one is that the applicant is bound to the schematics, design, materials, and colors as submitted and as stated in this public hearing. The applicant shall comply with all CDOT requirements. C, the applicant shall propose, and with CDOT approval, install a berm with plantings and landscaping between the gap along the west edge of the eastbound lane of Highway 24. Prior to a building permit for any building, a final plat must be approved by the city, and then we have specifications for what the applicant has to include in that final plat. E, all on and off-site landscaping is approved, conditioned on the maintenance by this particular, by the property owner, whoever the property owner may be in the future or now. Signage has to be approved by a special permit application. All exterior lighting, we are recommending that it be 3,000 Kelvin or less, motion-activated, and a maximum no more than 20 feet high from the ground to the top of the pole. Staff is conditioning that there be no uses involving storing flammable or explosive materials, hazardous chemicals, paints, or solvents, that the use of the storage compartments be limited to storage of personal property, and no other use shall be permitted except a manager's office or residence, which is clearly incidental to the principal use. The unit shall not be used for storing, keeping animals, food, home occupations, maintenance, repair of motor vehicles, sales of any sort, flammable explosive materials, and hazardous chemicals, paints, solvents, gasoline, or propane. No single storage compartment shall have a floor area exceeding 300 square feet, no outside storage of personal goods. Building cupboard shall not exceed 60% of the site. All development impact fees must be paid, and the commercial zoning development permit must be submitted to the planning department, which includes final construction and civil engineering plans of all of the plans that we've looked at now. And we're also asking for the final stormwater drainage plan and the CDOT access permit for any work within the CDOT right-of-way. That concludes my presentation. Mr. Chairman, thank you for your patience.
Question?
Questions?
I've got a question on the outdoor storage of RVs. Is that to be recommended, you know, is that clear language that that is not going to be allowed?
We've asked on our number-one condition with changes to the site plan, that he take out every incidence of RV storage so that it's not on any site plan that's approved. And with the 300-square-foot limitation, there's no way he can store RVs anywhere inside.
Well, can we make it boats? I mean, can we make trailers? If they're small enough...
Any type of outdoor storage, no.
No outdoor storage at all permitted, that's part of this use. You can't have any outdoor storage. And if it fits within a 300-square-foot facility, box, compartment...
Then it's tucked away.
It's personal property.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that since page one of four, you're saying that that whole thing's been scrapped, I want to make sure that it's on this too.
If I could just interject, that is not allowed under the current code. So if that code does not get amended in the future, it wouldn't be allowed anyway. So having a note that says, "It's not allowed," it's not allowed. The code doesn't allow it. So we couldn't have it anywhere.
Then I've got another question on these berms. How tall are they?
Oh, which one were you thinking of? Because they all have different...
Basically, on the, I mean, a berm can be a foot tall or it can be, I mean, you know...
Yeah. Let me go to the grading.
You're talking about natural berms that were already there. I think they're only like maybe five foot tall at the most.
Well, I wouldn't call them natural berms, because I think they were created for the sewage lagoons.
The berms, the berms are more than 10 feet high. So if you go stand down on the bottom, it's, they're well above your head, we could count contours.
So you can see it's steep on both sides and it's, those are...
Yeah, they're 10 feet plus.
And how tall are the fences going to be?
Six.
Only six. How tall are the buildings?
The buildings will be 10 to 12 feet. The larger buildings, when they say this, the larger buildings with the gables will be maybe upwards of 20 feet next to the top of the gable.
Just one quick question. Fees in lieu of the sidewalk? We've discussed that before, I think, in earlier council meetings, but does the city take those fees and actually build a sidewalk down the road, or do they just put those fees in a big pot for sidewalks? Or do they just put them in a big pot for anything?
It goes in a big pot for sidewalks.
Okay.
The priority sidewalks that need to be installed within the city.
Right. And are the fees based on the square footage that it would normally would have cost? And how much is that in lieu of?
Our city engineer would determine that cost, and there's inflation, and so it would be the cost of the construction of a full sidewalk for that length of road.
It's approximately $50 a layer foot for a five-foot sidewalk with curb and gutter.
At this point...
Oh, go ahead. Could you clarify how binding the submittals in the site plan are as to building size and changes in the parking layout and changes in the building layout and such?
Right. So when the applicant comes in, the next step, if this does get approved by council, would be submittal of the zoning development permits. And the zoning development permits is where we take what is submitted and revised, because oftentimes there are revisions, and we compare it with what was approved in the site plan and the conditional use permit. And we ask for substantial compliance. There is an ability to, you know, move a building or change some, but if they're moving an entire building or adding an entire building, that would be substantial variance from the site plan, and we'd ask them to come in and amend their CUP and site plan.
The trail that's referred to, what is the status of that? Is there a trail easement?
It's an American Discovery Trail. We do have an easement, actually, that captures the creek and...
That's, so it's part of the creek, there's reference to the need for creek easement, but so there's an existing trail easement? Or is it part of the proposed easement?
There is an existing easement that exists, actually, let me go back. It covers most of the creek, comes down, goes down here, and then comes back up here. And it was the existing easement that was created for the lagoons, for the sewage lagoons. Now that easement, I believe, is access and drainage and utilities, so it doesn't include park. And so we would ask for that easement to be amended to include the trail for the park.
For public use would be part of that for the trail?
Yes, yes.
Particularly if it's more related to connect up to it.
Yeah.
Since you got the picture up, you can leave that for a minute. Which, which line segments on the parcel property are front? The reason is, I believe on the drawing, it has one that's vertical to the right and vertical in the middle. One connecting them seems to be as much frontage as the ones on the, as the one to its right.
Yeah.
Where that's indicated is a side setback. Looks to me equally frontal as what below it. Have I cleared you? Have I heard what I just said?
I think you're talking about the angled, I have the mouse here.
Yeah, well, they're both angled relative to the road, either pair.
He's showing a 15-foot setback, so he's considering this aside.
You've got that in there.
And then this one is also considered a...
This is, they're both fronts.
Here's the highway.
This one, he's showing a 50-foot setback, so he's considering that.
So I'm just saying, they're both very angles to the highway, but you're satisfied that the one in the middle is a side setback and not a front?
And one of the reasons is because this would be a side setback for this property, which is the city property. And that's not unusual for staff to make that determination.
The other item is just to indicate, this is partly just for members of the commission to think about, that some, other people are taking notes, variety of representations or at least statements made by the applicant in regard to the site, which I don't think are identified in the, in the conditions either submitted in the application originally or in the staff conditions, or just knowing any of these are some that are considered important to the commission. Is that, maybe that would be useful to some of those items?
So this, this public hearing is part of a public record, and he is bound by all the comments he makes in this public hearing. Now, it is...
I'm sympathetic with his comment, though, to say is that, you know, if he said something and, well, you know, he said it orally too, then we're going to go back and look at the tape and decide what was binding too. That's probably not a good practice for anybody.
It happens.
That'll be down the road somewhere, somebody else. All right, okay, all right, well, maybe if people are comfortable with that, I don't mean to belabor it, but...
I have a question. It's the applicant. One of the things that I can't figure out, and you can help me with, is that the difference between phase one and phase two. On this drawing here, the first two buildings and the two angled buildings will not be built. The ones that go against the berm in the two...
Correct.
Okay. Now, there's a, there's a line across there that, before that other, bigger bill, and you're built. Okay. Okay, that's an exposed part of the lagoon. How's that going to be landscaped before you go to phase two?
We are not proposing to landscape that. We believe that phase two will come online in less than 18 months.
So you wouldn't be opposed to us putting that condition in there?
I would, because I don't want to spend money on trees and various types of landscaping.
I'm talking about grass?
We would absolutely, okay, let me back up. We would absolutely seed it and set up vegetation, absolutely.
That's what I'm concerned about, that we're not looking at a dirt pond for the...
We don't want that either.
Okay.
Yes.
You know what I mean.
I do, I just don't want to...
It's inert, we know that.
We don't want to plant a bunch of trees that we're ripping out in 18 months.
No, 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 that's not what I'm talking about.
Yeah, okay, sorry. I should ask for clarification.
Thank you. Other time, this is a question for applicant on their agenda, or staff?
I've still got a question. Based on the sewage leak problem, if we had another one, where would that, based on the terrain, where would that flow go? I mean, where did it go last time? I need clarification before, you know, I would hate to see all that gone because we had another sewage leak of 600,000.
Yeah.
You know, and you have to protect everybody that has their stuff stored in there as well as your building, so...
Right, right. So once again, and Sally's recollection of the leak, the leak had to do with a plugged pipe, and that was upstream of the lift station. And so that would naturally flow to the creek prior to getting to the site if that were to occur again, which is what happened in this case. As far as the, the plant itself, the lift station, this is actually a pond. So I think Laura said she thought it was a hill, and I think she was just mistaken in the heat of the moment. So this is a pond, so if you go out and look at it or look at the pictures, that pond is an overflow pond. That's required, and so if the lift station, for whatever reason, stops functioning. So lift station has multiple pumps, which we discussed. It also has a generator. So if it loses power, there's a generator to keep it running. So there are multiple redundancies, and in the worst-case scenario, that pond will fill up.
And where did the, where did the waste go the last time, though? Based on that map?
It went through, it went right here.
So it went up?
Up. This is a little, it came from this area here and came down and went into the creek. So it went into the creek upstream, yes.
Anything else? Okay, at this point, we'll open up public comment, and we need the, David will give me the list. No, you can do that in a public comment. Okay, we're not there yet. They get to go first, unless you're first. Tom and Sue Meals? Name, address, serial number.
My name is Paul Meals, like three times a day, or more, depending. I live in Chappeta Park, not up here, but I do have Fountain Creek that does run right through my property. I have 10 acres right on the creek in Chappeta Park. And the last couple, three or four years, we've seen a significant amount of water coming down the creek when it rains up here in Woodland Park. It used to be that, prior to Safeway, prior to Wally World, prior to the new apartment buildings, just west of Safeway, all of that area was pretty much open area, grass, had trees, and any type of rainfall that came in had a place to go. Now you have all of that area that has been asphalted in, there's no place for the water to go into except into Fountain Creek, and it has increased the amount of drainage down into the creek further down, and I've seen significant water flows going, you know, through our property. And now you're proposing more asphalt because of the storage area. It does sound nice to be able to have it, but I look at it in another way with the amount of rainfall that can occur, and it's not just a small little bit of rain, but I'm talking about the times where you do have significant rains of two to four inches. And at that time, after the flood, or after the fire, I should say, we've had floods that came in and it had affected some of my property in the Chappeta Park. But at the same time, we had water coming in from Woodland Park that has increased the amount of water that comes through, and it has significant erosional problems that we have. I do not like that. I, you know, is there a way to be able to stop that? I hear about these ponds that are supposed to stop it, but if you have a lot of rain and no place for the water to really to go, it just goes right into the creek. And that's what happens at Walmart, that's what happens at Safeway, that's what happens with those apartment buildings, because they're right on the creek and all of those. And now you're proposing to put a new storage shed complex, and it's right on the creek.
One of the things that took place along, not too many years ago, do you remember behind Safeway, that the city and the federal government spent about $2 million putting a cascade of waterfalls back there to stop that water from going in Fountain Creek quickly? That was, that was a big project that was done. When Walmart was approved, again, they went in there and changed a lot of Fountain Creek behind Walmart. The problem that we have is the county's portion that you get, once you get past the Safeway intersection there, it turns to, it turns to Teller County. They've never had the funds to clean that out.
Well, those funds were diverted to go to a project up on Cheyenne Mountain Canyon and not where it really needed to be done.
You need to talk to Teller County why they did that. Because we did our part with doing that from the city behind Safeway with a very, very big project. And the only thing, and this is a good question for Eric. Eric, I know that the size of these retention ponds, they normally let the water trickle off at a rate so that it doesn't impact. Is that all been sized by engineering and stuff like that to do that?
Whatever you want to do. It's pertinent now, you might as well.
It's easier now.
So as far as...
So as far as the city's requirements, we're required to detain the flows between the, uh, pre-development flows as it sits today, vacant property, and the post-development as it's developed. The city actually has very stringent detention requirements that are in place that are actually greater than the City Cower Springs and most every other place. And that is that there's additional volume that has to be held from the city's criteria, uh, which I believe is seventy-five percent of the two-year event, uh, a hundred percent of the five-year event, and a hundred percent of the hundred-year event from a volume perspective. And so there's actually a lot of volume, additional volume above and beyond what other communities require that has to be handled in the pond. The pond has been designed for that.
I understand. Valid.
Alright, my name is Christina Chapman, I live at 260 Sunreach Court, um, here in Woodland Park. And I'm actually gonna read my statement because I didn't do too well not actually read it last time. So, my concern, as I'm sure a lot of community members have, um, is not the development of Woodland Park, it's not that we develop, develop our land. It is that it remains consistent with the code and the zoning map for the city. The zoning map was put into place to help regulate which businesses should reside in which areas in order to reduce impacts on the community from that proposed development. There is no reason for the city to approve or to issue a conditional use permit unless there is a community need and no other location in the city in which that business could reside within its permitted uses. The zoning map and regulations set forth in the municipal code paint a picture of what Woodland Park should look like in each area. It also states the developer's responsibilities in each situation. The first portion of this I'll talk about will be the community need. I have called all of the storage facilities that I was able to find within Woodland Park and asked them, are they normally full? Do they have, what capacity do they set at if they're not normally full? On average, our storage facilities, I went to six of them, out of I don't know how many there are, I was just driving around looking for them, um, I called six of them, and they are generally on average about seventy-five percent capacity. Granted, some of these places are small, so seventy-five percent capacity or twenty-five percent available for use may not be much, but it's available space. So basing a community need on no available space is what that community need would be. You cannot base a community need on market assessments, and there's a market for it. Yes, somebody can make money doing just about anything, but is there actually a need in our community for that in that particular location? I'm not opposed to there being more storage units, somebody will probably pay for them, there's a market for it. I'm proposing they go in where they're actually supposed to be, where there are permitted use, which is the S A H S C L. I can't say it now. Yes, Heavy Service Commercial District, sorry, thank you. Um, and there is property actually for sale currently that exceeds the amount of property they will need in order to make this mini storage unit in a permitted use. This property, this current property that I am speaking of is down by the post office off Tamarack. It is 5.44 acres, and it is heavy service commercial, and it's a permitted use in that area. I am, so, secondly, municipal code 18.57.00.0B states that conditional uses must have a demonstrated need to be located at the location proposed. The application for conditional use submitted by this LLC states that the market analysis has shown that, has shown that an additional self-storage, that an additional self-storage, including climate control storage, is needed in Woodland Park. This site is located within a service commercial zoning district in Woodland Park. The planning department states, "This site is highly developable and accessible, it is of sufficient size to satisfy the large land use needs of this type of use, and access to and from the site is from Highway 24, and to date only shared with the Saddle Club uses." That being said, the proposal must have a demonstrated need to be located at the location proposed. Neither of these justifications answer the question of demonstrated need to be located at the location proposed. Demonstrated need means an incontestable necessity to be located there, such as, such demonstrated need could be something along the lines of, "The property in question is the only location in the city with enough space to house the business as there are currently no properties on the market that meet the zoning requirements." Although, this is purely an example, this is just not true. There's a property, like I just said, next to the Tamarack post office, it does meet the, meet, and actually exceeds the requirements for what they need, um, and it's a permitted use in that area because that's what that area was zone for. I am, our municipal code also states that the burden of proving this demonstrated need is on the developer. They have not proven that. They've said there's a market for it, that they can make money doing it in this location. That's not a demonstrated need, that's not an incontestable proof that it has to be there. I am, it seems to me as though the burden of proof is now on the community, and this troubles me, and it should, all of you as well. What do we want our entrance to our city to look like? Currently, as you come into Woodland Park, you have beautiful businesses on the right, then you get to the intersection and Denny's on the right, Walmart on the left, continuing down, Mobile Home Park on the left, then the Saddle Club property. I'm sure when the site plan was proposed for the Denny's, it was beautiful. Same with the Mobile Home Park, same goes for Peak View Park. Now the Denny's is in disrepair, the Mobile Home Park is an ISO or impossible health, fire, safety hazard, and if you drive into Peak View, it's unkempt and disorderly. I use these examples because they are all properties that were or are currently owned by, by parts of the development company. I acknowledge that Peak View is not the responsibility of the city, but the idea's the same. I am, when proposed, they were beautiful concepts, now, not so much. I am, is it, is that what we want for the entrance to our city? Unkempt businesses, businesses in disrepair and ISOs? It worries me that any use that is not permitted would be allowed by the planning department, let alone possibly the city, when the developer has a reputation that precedes them. It also worries me that this same developer knowingly purchases or goes into contract to purchase properties that require conditional use permits, rezoning or reconfiguration of the land in order to meet their intent of development, when there are lots of currently available within the city that those particular uses are permitted and do not require rezoning, reconfiguration, or conditional use permitting. As citizens and decision-makers of this city, I implore you to hold the developers and city officials to a higher standard in upholding the municipal code and zoning map in order to preserve the integrity and beauty of Woodland Park. Please also remember that a developer is not entitled to the most profitable use of their property. They are only entitled to develop on it what would be considered a permitted use after their site plan has been approved. Thank you.
Good evening, Martin Nakai, 225 Morning Star Court.
Can you speak up, please?
225 Morning Star Court. Um, in the last meeting, um, we talked about some ISOs in that part of town, I think Commissioner Stan yourself mentioned, um, some existing properties there, and that you didn't wanna add to it. So I guess you guys have to decide tonight whether you think self-storage, uh, when placed down in that valley, is going to, how that's going to add to the visual nature of Woodland Park. I think even the commissioner mentioned that that property is almost impossible to screen because of the elevation change. Secondly, the, uh, I wanted to touch on the point that service commercial, uh, in my mind, should serve the whole community. You know, something should go there that serves, uh, the entire public. It's on the Highway 24 corridor, it will attract, uh, tourism, it will attract some type of revenue into the city. Uh, I'm not sure a few hundred customers served by self-storage really qualifies as This is also probably one of the last remaining lots of this size on the Highway 24 corridor in the city. And you guys have to, just tonight, I guess, decide whether you think self-storage is an appropriate utilization of that kind of a lot. So just before you, you know, vote on this tonight, remember you're gonna have to, you know, look at that, whatever goes there whenever you drive in the city. Now, um, a couple, a couple questions for Laura. You mentioned drainage to the south of the property, um, right, into the field, or is that drainage into the creek?
None of this.
Okay. But then you also mentioned a berm on the south of the property to screen it from visually. So how can you have a berm and drainage to the south? To me, that seems a bit contradictory.
There's just a slope. If I said berm, I meant slope.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
It rises up and then there's the detention pond.
Fair enough. And then you also mentioned that CDOT has not approved any berms or landscaping on the frontage of Highway 24, is that correct?
That's correct, I don't believe they even know that, that's-
Is the proposed berms and landscaping just in front of this particular section of the Saddle Club that is under contract, or is it for the entire?
It's for the gap between trees that exist along Highway 24, so there are some trees at the corner of Trall Road, there's a cluster of trees, Trall Road and Highway 24, and then there's a gap, an opening in the trees, and then they start up again where they come, where the right-of-way comes adjacent to the Mobile Home Park.
So it's all in front, not just in front of this property?
Correct.
Okay, okay. But you don't have that approval yet, correct?
No.
Okay. And to address the elephant in the room, we have all read in here, um, the RV storage, we're being told tonight it's not part of the plan, um, but it's in all of these documents in the application. I suggest, um, you folks consider tabling this application tonight until ordinance 1324 is resolved, because this is a, uh, conditional permitted use application where this is the only chance the public may get to review and speak on this topic. If the ordinance goes through and it allows for some permitted storage of RV storage of some type, these folks may never get another chance to do this. So I think that between waiting for approval from CDOT for the berms and the landscaping, and waiting for ordinance 1324 to complete, you, you guys should consider tabling this, uh, this application. Thank you.
Thanks. Elijah Murphy.
Elijah Murphy, 204 Midland Avenue, Woodland Park, Colorado. Mr. Chairman, councilmembers, I would first like to read a statement that was, uh, I was asked to read into the record by Mr. Arnie Sparnes, 2621 Visticlin Court, Woodland Park. "My concerns are not about the specific proposal, but the process itself. How can the planning commission approve a site plan for a use that is not allowed? The proposed facility does not comply with permitted and conditional uses specified in the municipal code, section 18 dot 09 dot 090, which states that no single storage compartment shall have a floor area exceeding 300 square feet. The city has initiated the process to change the code through draft ordinance number 1324, which has the topic, which was the topic discussed on the April 12th and May 10th planning commission meetings. Changes to, changes to the code are still a work in progress. This site plan should be denied because the use is not compliant with the current Woodland Park municipal code. If and when the code has changed, the applicant should resubmit their plan. Approving a site plan for a use that is not allowed sets a dangerous precedence. If we choose to ignore the law, would this apply to other districts such as Community Commercial, which also allows conditional use for mini storage with size limitations? We need to first rewrite and approve changes to our municipal code before we can move forward with projects that are contingent upon the changes. This site plan does not confirm with current municipal code, and approval will set a non-performance precedence with potentially major unintended consequences." Thank you.
Thanks.
Now for Elijah Murphy. Um, Sally, what are the requirements, uh, what has to be done to the creek prior to the, uh, development?
This development is not impacting or affecting the creek, so there are no improvements-
So there's not gonna be $2 million or $4 million worth of improvements to the creek required?
There are not with this development.
Thank you very much, I, I was incidentally told that there were, but, um, are, is the Saddle Club gonna have any problem getting their TUPs to utilize?
No, sir.
No problems getting the TUPs? Okay, that was not what I was told either.
Who were you told by?
Mr. Chuck Mahoney.
Okay.
Mr. Chuck Mahoney.
I just wanted to make sure you're not told by the staff.
You know you were not told by the staff. Okay, um, there's a reason why they don't want the property over on Tamarack, because, let's see, property prices are, and taxes are run by, um, comps, are they not? They actually go out, the assessors pull comps and, um, assess the values of properties there based on what they sell for, is that correct?
Among other factors.
Okay. So, I can understand why it's a very, um, great time for the, uh, property to sell at the bargain basement price, the ultimate price for the entire 24 acres is $2.4 million. Um, I'd say the reason why it doesn't wanna go over on Tamarack there, uh, Ms. Christina, is because recently 2.17 acres on Tamarack sold for $3.3 million. I got that, okay. So at the end of the day, that property selling for $2.4 million would hurt other people's property values, or at least drive their taxes down, maybe. I'd be okay with it if it was driving the taxes down. So, are they allowing, are they allowing sales or not?
Uh, they're allowing sales of box items and tape-
So the part you read where it says no sales whatsoever is not correct?
Uh, I meant no sales within each compartment, so I can clarify-
Oh, so they won't be selling outdoor?
Selling merchandise, like garage sales.
I read it, okay, the way I understood it, they, they, there were no sales allowed on the lots whatsoever.
Yeah.
And there's no outdoor storage except for the, um-
The truck and trailer rental-
Truck and trailer rentals?
Will be outdoor.
Okay. Well, I do have a problem with the layout. It landlocks the easternmost piece of property belonging to the Saddle Club. There is no easement, there is no rail, way for them to access it. In fact, it, uh, landlocks it between, uh, owners of the LLC, which could put the Saddle Club in a very precarious position as far as being able to sell that property for a proper value in the future. So between all things said, I really smell a lot of self-serving stuff going on. I'm sorry.
This is not germane to this.
Okay.
Okay.
At the end of the day, um, the opinions of many of the people, um, I'm trying to figure out where the excited investors are coming from, but the storage lots, I'm, I'm wondering why it's getting a conditional use permit where it's at when there are other properties that are available in town. So, thank you very much, have a nice day.
Thank you. The girl that stood up and wanted to go first, you can come up now if you'd like to.
Hi, my name is Linda Morton, and it was very good meeting me last night. Thank you very much for listening.
Linda, we just need your address.
I live at 1270 County Road 21, and I'm right in back on Crystal Road, you know, between Walmarts and Safeway. And I have some questions that I can't quite figure out. It seems that the need that is being served- It seems that the need that is being served is for Charis and transient students of Charis. My question is, why wouldn't you put this storage unit near or on Charis property? And my second question is, could we serve Woodland Park community, businesses, and residents? So for example, what if the Saddle Club fulfilled its community purpose and allowed our community access to the rodeo grounds for festivals?
Not germane to this, what we're doing tonight, okay?
Well, I...
It's not.
You don't think the need?
No.
The purpose?
How we're talking about is conditional use of the service commercial area.
I see. Okay. Could my first question be addressed about why not put, since we're serving the Charis community, why not put this on Charis property?
There are no, there are no dormitories out there. There's no place to store anything. It's all commuter, and they all have to go someplace else wherever they live. They don't live out there.
Okay.
Okay.
They don't live out there?
Nope.
Okay.
Just giving you that for an answer, that's all.
And would it be beneficial to those students to have storage there that might facilitate the building of dormitories?
Charis has, and we're gonna get off to this one time, and then we're gonna go back to what we're talking about, is that Charis has plans to add dormitories out there, but they have to be for tax purposes. They are not, they are not, and Charis, if Charis have not decided to do that, and they've asked us to change them to a nonprofit where there'd be no property taxes at this point, the city has said no.
I see.
Okay.
And how does this benefit the people of Woodland Park?
It's where I can put my ATV. It's where I could put a boat. All kinds of things like that, because 10 by 30 at 300 square feet will put a pretty darn good-sized boat in there. It's just, it will. So, I mean...
Wait, wait. I thought boats aren't gonna be there.
No, didn't say that. You can put a boat in your garage at home.
But in this storage unit, I thought boats weren't gonna be there.
Not outside storage. No.
I'm confused. I thought you said you could put your boat?
I could have ran a unit and put a boat in there, or an ATV, or a couple motorcycles, whatever you wanted to, if you didn't have room in your garage. So it's not, I don't think it's just Charis. That's just me personally. I don't think it's just Charis.
Okay. So you, as a community member, would use this storage unit to place your boat?
Or things like that, on that order. You betcha. You don't believe that?
I believe that you would put a boat in there. What I thought I heard is that there won't be boats in there.
No. I don't think we've ever said that, did we?
We were just questioning...
No outside storage, and that's what Vicki had asked.
We were questioning the gasoline types.
Yeah.
Boats can be drained.
Pardon?
Boats can be drained.
Boats can be drained. That's good.
They sure can.
That's good. Thank you for asking.
Thank you for coming.
Answering my questions.
That concludes the public comment.
Ask.
Is there anybody else? Two? No, you've already been up, Mike. Two. Okay, who have their hands up again? Gal back in the back row, she snuck it up before you. You're next. She can come up now. Okay. Come on up.
Lisa Hough, live at 51 Aspen Garden Way, directly across the street from Safeway. My question is, when I was listening to the external agency notifications, there was no mention of the EPA organizations that regulate building on or near a federally protected headwater.
You're thinking?
Such as the armed four of engineers.
The creek.
Yes.
Right.
Well, it's a federally protected headwater.
It's within the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, but there are no impacts to the creek.
But has it been contacted?
No.
They need to be, because they are building on or near the federally protected headwater.
Only if they're impacting.
It will be impacted. It is already impacted. The wall, the bank, that they will be building next to, is already falling into the creek. And I can see it clearly from my property, in large chunks, which makes me worry about the Centennial Trail going right next to such an unstable creek bed. And this is a telecamera question.
Yes.
Although, even though this portion that's in the city, it is in very, very bad repair. And, I don't know, tons of dirt from the wall where they're planning to build right next to is falling into the creek every year. It is a requirement to build on or near a federally protected headwater. It's also a floodplain. It's also protected by the National Fish and Wildlife as a wetland. All of these agencies need to be contacted, and clearances need to be given. Do you agree?
We can certainly make that request as part of the conditions.
Could be a condition we could add to this, yes. Okay, and the applicant wants to address that? Okay. All right. You in the tame yellow shirt.
You gotta be able to see me.
I know that.
My name is J.W.B. Campbell. I live at 534 Tealpee Circle. I've talked to a lot of people in my years here, and a lot of people wanna see growth in this community. They wanna see new businesses. They wanna see Woodland Park grow. They wanna see more families. They want our schools to grow, and they want us to expand. Having another storage, I don't think it's gonna hurt us, and I don't think it's gonna be an eyesore. I know the Saddle Club sits down there, it's a bowl of dust, and at times, it can be an eyesore. But I think the way developer is setting up this building is not going to be something that people are gonna drive in and go, oh, that's gross. I think they're gonna come in and take a look and say, some people took some time to put this together and make it look good and set it up right, so it doesn't look like it sticks out with Walmart. Thank you.
I'm gonna close the public session. And at this point in time, the applicant would like to address some issues.
Well, I'll try to run through a few of these. I guess maybe I'll start with the last one raised with respect to FEMA, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and those types of entities. That is required when there's an impact. So if there was work that was gonna be done in the creek, if there was work that was gonna be done within the 100-year floodplain, then yes. Those agencies would have to be consulted with, and there would have to be additional studies done to determine whether they are impacting threatened and endangered species or wetlands, whether there's impacts to the floodplain that are going to affect both upstream and downstream properties. In this case, we are not within the floodplain, we're outside the 100-year floodplain, we're not in the 500-year floodplain. We are not impacting any types of environmental resources. So I would not, I would ask that a condition not be added, because that is something that is not required and could become a burden to us from a development, developer perspective and development perspective, because trying to go to those agencies with something that's not required could take an extremely long time, because we have difficulties going to them when we do have an issue and trying to work with them. In this case, we do not have any impacts. So I would ask that that condition not be considered. I guess one comment I'd make, so, you know, from a development perspective, there's always a question of, you know, why here? You know, what's the demonstrated need, right? We heard that, and it's a good question. Frankly, the property, Heavy Service Commercial that's down by the post office, this project won't work there. Why? It has no visibility. You know, the thing that you hear in real estate is what? Location, location, location. There is no visibility down by the post office. So if this, if that were the only place in town that this would go, this wouldn't go. It just would not go. The other thing I'd point out is the reason why we have zoning codes, the reason why we have conditional use permit process is so that a use that maybe doesn't fit within the permitted use but fits within the conditional use is allowed. So if we can only develop based on what's a permitted use in the zone, then we should get rid of the conditional use permit process. There have been many projects in the city of Woodland Park and elsewhere that have been built under conditional use permits, special use permits. That's the reason why the code has that in there, is to provide flexibility. Location is important to us.
I've got a question for you. The no visibility, with all the berms and everything, I thought it was gonna be very low visibility. Now you're talking, you don't want the other location because of the visibility impact, that it would be no visibility, you said, no visibility, and location and location. So which one, I mean, how much visibility are you really gonna have on that location?
Well, down at Tamarack, we would have zero, because there are no cars that drive hardly at all down Tamarack, or even down 67. We have 30,000, 35,000 cars a day along Highway 24. Yes, we're providing screening, we will have signage, it will have visibility from the highway.
But I thought we were serving Woodland Park.
We are.
Okay. That's all I wanted to clarify, is that we were serving Woodland Park with, okay.
Yeah. No, I believe that we are providing a need. Our market study contacted this year all of the other storage facilities in town. Many of them are full. The one that is consistently full is the one on Highway 67. It is the newest in town, 15 years old, give or take, and a project of this scope and scale and this type of professional, professionally built, professionally maintained, third-generation project will be very competitive in this environment.
I have a question concerning the actual footage. Can you compare, like, one of the grocery stores, like Safeways, Walmart, the size that we are talking about being actually asphalted and with the storage units and the buildings? Is that comparable to a Walmart total?
Walmart's much bigger.
Would it be more like a Safeways?
No, Safeway's much bigger.
Do we have anything in town that, or that we would be familiar with to understand what we're talking about per square foot? I mean, I could sell you a pen this big, or I could sell you a pen that goes from that wall to that wall, so we can have a full understanding of how much water we're talking about that's gonna go into the detention pot.
So from a stormwater perspective, if that's the crux of your question, we're required to meet the city's requirements, the Drainage Criteria Manual. The Drainage Criteria Manual has very specific requirements as it relates to how the calculations are done, how the volumes are obtained, or detained, I should say, and what those requirements must be. We meet those requirements. We meet the requirements for both detention as well as water quality.
Is it as big as, say, the hospital with all the parking around it?
Hospital's much bigger.
Can you give me an example on that type of acreage? What you're talking about putting the amount of asphalt and building, so I can understand, you might say 134,000 square feet, and comprehension-wise, that sounds like a pretty big number to me. And is there anything in town that would be comparable to what you guys are planning on building?
I don't know off the top of my head. That's not something that I carry around with me. Walmart is huge.
You couldn't take a guess?
I, maybe Sally or Laura could venture a guess. I'll tell you, the shopping centers are massive compared to what this is gonna be. The Walmart parking lot is, I don't know how many acres, it's way overbuilt. The Walmart parking lot's never full. The Walmart parking lot could have been a lot smaller. City code required it to be what it is. So I do not know of another property in Woodland Park that I'd say...
What about Colorado Springs? Is there one there that we could all relate to?
There are many storage projects in Colorado Springs that are for...
We're not talking any type of, whether it's a shopping mall or a couple restaurants put together, just so that we can understand what, how many square feet are we actually talking about being paved with buildings, without, you know, with the other small buildings?
We have a total impervious area of three acres.
Okay.
Small.
Three acres?
120,000 square feet.
So that is...
133,529 square feet.
I was close.
So the building of Walmart itself is just a little bit over 100,000. So add a third more, so it's gonna be Walmart, the building, plus a third. This 165?
165.
John is correcting me.
165,000 for the Walmart building, because the one down in Springs is 205 on the east street. And so what they did to us, it's a smaller, it's a smaller profile. I remember that being a consolation.
I'll give you another example. See if I'm right on this one. Safeway, its building itself is 55,000 square feet. So it would be almost, it would be two Safeways plus?
No parking lot. No parking lot.
No parking lot.
I'm talking about just the building.
Just so that we can understand, when you say 133,000 square feet, without having any
reference point?
Sure.
But like I said, it could be this pen, or it could be a pen, it's the whole span of the room.
Could I ask you a question, Eric? And then I have a question for staff. There was an assertion made during the public comment that you've been a part of substandard projects, and I'd like you to just comment on that. I've only been in the community for five years. I've sat on the planning commission a number of years. Out of that, I heard you present for the assisted living, which personally I think has turned into a terrific project. So I don't have whatever this history is about, if there is a history at all.
As it relates to me as a developer, I've been involved in two projects in Woodland Park. One is Trail Ridge, and the other is the assisted living that you speak of, just as you come into town. I am very proud of those projects. I think they've turned out extremely nice. I think they've been tremendous benefits to the community. Trail Ridge was a $26 million project. The assisted living is a $2.5 million project. This project is a $5 million project. So when we invest, when we invest $5 million into a project, we're not going to let it decay. It's significant dollars. Some of the other properties and such that were mentioned, I'll just say for, in general, every community has buildings that, for whatever reason, have gone out of business, and they go into a state of disrepair, then they get redeveloped and they're refreshed. You're never gonna have every building, you know, looking perfect all the time. It'd be great, but that just isn't the cycle of business. It happens.
Thank you. And my second question is to staff. There was also an assertion made that there's a high bar, a very high bar for us to approve a conditional use if it can otherwise be a permitted use elsewhere. And I struggle with the logic of that a little bit because I don't know why we would have conditional uses if we simply would refuse to approve them. So would you comment on the bar that was the assertion?
Yes, Mr. Eric, Commissioner Scanlon. That bar is certainly not a bar that is set by staff. The conditional use permit process exists as a process that an applicant goes through for an entitlement. Any piece of land that has a conditional use, a C in our matrix, can be, can be proposed by an applicant for a use that's listed as conditionally. And then they need to demonstrate how they can meet all the requirements to allow that conditional use to occur on this site.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
One of the advantages, let me interject a thought. When we have a conditional use, we have a public meeting. If it's a permitted use, there isn't a public meeting.
Right.
So this is the opportunity for you folks to come and share what you hear, share what we say because if it's permitted, staff just does it. I like conditional use because of the fact we have a chance for us to look at that and listen from you and listen from everybody else to do this. And I just like it that way.
We also get, I'm sorry, we also get a chance to adjust what's proposed.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple other points on rebuttal, if that's okay?
Sure.
Just to make sure that you get them on the record.
Sorry, I kind of got you halfway through the list.
I'm totally fine.
Okay.
You can go back and forth. I just want to make it clear, we are not proposing any RV parking, outdoor, indoor, of any kind related to this. There's some holdover on the plan sheets. That is a comment and a condition and that will be cleaned up. So that, there's none, nothing of that sort. All storage will be indoor storage, 300 square foot units or less. So it complies with the current city code. I also want to note, you know, as far as the carous and the storage, I just want to make a point that the previous market study I had done in 2012 did not consider carous at all. Carous was under construction and was not open. And the gentleman that did the study told me straight up that he would not include any impact related to carous. It did not include the Trail Ridge apartments because they had not been started or built. So that market study in 2012 confirmed the need for this. So that was prior to carous. I, about 20, 25% of the renters will be businesses. The other 75% will be from the general public. Generally, it's a five-mile radius that you reach out on these types of facilities. As far as the landscaping of berm along Highway 24, I'm fine with the comment. I'll just state that I'm happy to work with the city on that. CDOT is in the middle of it and I don't know what CDOT will approve or not approve. So what I want to make sure is that we're not held to something that we can't get approved by CDOT. So CDOT obviously is going to approve any grading in their, in the right of way. They're going to approve any type of landscape in the right of way. There's also an easement for the overhead power lines that has to be considered. So, and the last point I'd make is typically developers are required to landscape on their property, not necessarily on other parcels of land. We are proposing trees within our property boundaries along the top of the berm and we've clustered the trees there to, thank you, Laura. We've, as she shows here, we've clustered those trees there for the purpose of providing that screening. As I said, that berm is 10, 12 feet tall. You know, we put a nice sized ponderosa pine on there 20 years from now after it grows. You know, that, those will be fairly large trees. But if we have a 12-foot berm and we place a, I don't know how tall, I did not look that up, but a six-foot tall tree on it, I mean, you're at 16, 18 feet. So we will obtain some very good screening landscaping along the top of this berm. So I think that that's something that I would ask that we have a little leeway to work with staff on so that we're not put into a situation and a condition that we cannot meet. Uh, let's see what else. I think that is all I have. Are there any other questions of me?
I have a couple of questions. You've referred to, and perhaps Ms. Pellegrino has as well, that it's a shed roof. But you said it's like a residential roof, so I'm assuming it's steamed?
Yes.
And done just like a residential roof would look of any place in Woodland Park? A matted corrugated steel shed roof?
No.
I just wanted to clarify that.
It'll be a standing seam metal, just like you see the, you know, the standing seams with the pan, kind of like pan.
Okay, correct.
And green. We chose green because we feel like it fits the landscape.
Okay, good.
We've chosen green doors on the outside.
Mr. Chair, a couple of questions. In your initial presentation, you referred to improvements for the access to the city's lift station. There's something, I mean, I know the driveway, so did you mean something entrance into the city property or simply just that the road is going to be improved to back to the entrance to your facility?
Right. So we'll be building a brand-new road, troll road. Currently, it's asphalt, but it's kind of broken up. There's no curb and gutter. It's just, you know, a driveway basically. So that will be improved to a, you know, full roadway section, two-lane road, of course, with curb and gutter. And then we will be installing a driveway for the city parcel.
Can I ask, this is the staff, is the adequate description of materials they provided as to the road improvements that will be done, you're comfortable with as they're listed?
Yeah, it'll be an asphalt roadway with concrete curb and gutter.
I think I heard in Ms. Pellegrino's presentation, a suggestion, a suggestion that we might ask for something more specific about fence material?
Fence material and roof, and the roofing, the-
And our chairman just addressed the roofing too. Maybe if you could address the fence material too and perhaps you'd consider those as staff comments to be added with the response?
Yeah, it'll be an iron fence. Yes. Yep.
One other one. Early on, a question was asked to you about the scale of the truck rental, U-Haul type, type things and the suggestions because there's only a fairly small area, it must be a fairly small operation. While that's a permitted use, if it's being done in connection with a much larger conditional use associated with it, I think one could look at limitation in the size of that. Are you prepared to agree to any particular limitation on the size of the, the size of that operation? How many rental trucks will be parked up and down all through the space, otherwise in the, in, within the facility?
No.
You're not prepared to agree to that?
And the reason for that is I'm not quite sure how that might sort itself out. If I were to decide to buy, you know, move it to another service commercial spot, we could have as many trucks as, you know, the setbacks and whatnot would allow. Our intent here is not to have trucks parked, you know, for feet upon feet, but to try to say, well, you can only have four trucks and three trailers. I'm just not prepared to, to commit to that tonight.
This afternoon, I took a, a architectural's ruler and checked the size of that place where those trucks are going to go. It's about 30 feet deep. You can probably get six or seven trucks there. And you still got a full 24 feet on the roadway between there and where the parking places start in front of the building. So I just want to let you know that I was just checking up on the road there, see how they would be in there. Okay?
Well, that's, that's why we designed it that way. The intent is, is that front area will be where the trucks and trailers are. That does not mean that we may not have a drop-off that requires the truck to be pulled down into the fenced area because that, that can happen. We may have two or three truck drop-offs that occur on a Sunday that you're not, you know, you're not expecting.
And on the subject of trucks and trailer rental, if you were going to develop this site and all you wanted to do is have a truck and trailer rental business there in full view of every citizen that came up and down Highway 24, that would be a permitted use and we would never have a public hearing on it.
Correct. That's correct. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I've got a question concerning the landlocked property.
Great question.
Can we make it a requirement that they have some type of easement?
So what I would suggest, if you're okay with it, I'm okay with that being added as a comment or a condition on this. However, we have to plat the property and we're going to bring a final plat forward very quickly and submit it to the city. We cannot develop the property. We cannot pull a building permit. We can't do anything until a final plat's approved. Part of that final plat process will require an easement to be granted for access to that parcel. And we are prepared to grant an easement to provide access to that parcel. And that, and that will be addressed with the final plat application, which has not been submitted to the city yet.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just add one point regarding the truck and trailer rental. As a permitted use in service commercial, it is limited to no more than 10 rental units outdoors on the lot at any time. So it would never become much bigger than that.
We'll commit to 10.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
At this point in time, if we don't have any other questions, we'll go into deliberation and talk about it among ourselves. Thank you. You can always call anybody back up. I would like to add a condition that it's graded and seated on the lot and on the second phase. So I'm not looking at an old pond there. Is that okay?
Yes.
I would like to make sure that that's finished before Lot 2 is, or Phase 2 is built. Anybody else? Have any else they want to do?
If CDOT had a substantial, however that's defined, and we could fill a room full of lawyers with substantial. But if CDOT really had significant revisions that affected materially the berm's and the landscaping on their property, what would happen? Would it come back here again?
You mean if CDOT would not approve the Birmingham landscaping?
Exactly.
We do have options. We could ask for additional landscaping on the city property. We would certainly allow for that to happen if, if it's not as, wouldn't reduce as much impact as the section along the highway. But if CDOT did not approve the landscaping in Birmingham, then it would not happen.
Okay.
I can't understand why CDOT hasn't complained about the berm's that are there now?
Yeah, I know. They consider them natural.
They're already there.
I'm just, you know, there was concern about the aesthetics and the open-endedness of the CDOT issue and I just wanted to know what the process would be. And it sounds like you answered my question that the project would have to be kind of redone.
To address what Vicki's problem was, I kind of liked the berm, so if the lift station goes over the brink again, it's not going to go down his property, it's going to go around.
Yeah.
I'm more worried about the city thing than CDOT. Sorry?
Okay.
The, the condition is written that the Birmingham landscaping occur with CDOT's approval. If CDOT doesn't want Birmingham landscaping, that Birmingham landscaping will not occur. But the project is still approved.
Okay.
CDOT may also require improvements to the highway.
Hmm. He knows that. Okay.
I've got a comment. The conditional use, I do not see any substantiated evidence as to why it should be granted. Can you elaborate on that? Other than cost? And, and-
So-
The way it's designed currently, if it was designed somewhere else, you just changed the layout a little bit or whatever. So I'm just trying to, in my mind, understand and need the information.
So Ms. Good, I'm, Mr. Chairman, is this okay? You guys are up talking, so I just, are you okay? I'm happy to answer the question.
Sure.
Okay.
Answer the question.
So sometimes, sometimes people get a little squirreled up. I'm not trying to avoid answering the question. This procedural. So the demonstrated need was the question, correct? Why here? Here because it's a commercial use. It needs visibility. It needs highway traffic volumes. It fits within the zoning as a conditional use permit. So from a demonstrated need standpoint, this is the ideal site for it. How, I, I don't know how I can demonstrate a need other than to say that I am ready to spend $5 million to put this project at this location where it is best suited to hopefully set it up for success. Putting it somewhere else, and I have looked, as Sally could attest to, at every piece of property in Woodland Park that I felt was viable. The property down off of Tammerack for this type of project, in my opinion and in the opinion of my market analyst, it's not a valid location. So this is the location that we've identified where this is viable and it does fit within the zoning code through a conditional use permit. And I'm not sure how I can hit a standard of trying to say it's a demonstrated need from maybe the way you're looking at it, Ms. Good. I, I don't know what else I can add.
Have you done any other studies or have any more information since the last study that you did? I think you said it was 2012 or 2009. Anything more current?
I do. The last study was completed January 10th of 2018. This is something that our bank requires, so they would not allow us to use a study that's many years old. But this revalidates the conclusions that were reached in 2012. I guess the last one I'd make is, you know, it's always a risk that we take as developers when we spend these kind of dollars that whatever we're building is going to work. And so we take a significant risk and part of that risk is spending a lot of money trying to come and get entitlements and move through the city process. So we understand that risk. That's the business we're in. But, you know, suffice it to say, you know, when we spend those kind of dollars, we try to make sure that we found the best location to put our money to work.
Sally, a question. Do you know off the top of your head the different projects we've built in this city in the last, whatever, five, 10 years that have been conditional use? Tractor Supply was one.
Tractor Supply was a conditional use.
The Elf was a conditional use.
Elf, the assisted living facility was a conditional use. The motel was not, but it was a PUD, Planned Unit Development, which is similar to a conditional use. We have quite a few. I mean, most of the uses in our matrix are conditional uses.
That's what I was trying to get at, done that quite a bit.
Yeah. Auto repair, we've had a few auto repair uses and ATVs, auto sales, conditional uses.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to read the standard that deals with need. If I may, you'll find that it's written narrowly focused. It says that the following shall apply to all uses requiring the approval of a conditional use permit. The proposed development and use shall have a demonstrated direct need to be located at the location proposed and provide adequate mitigation measures to lessen all identified impacts. Only deals with the location.
Okay.
Doesn't deal with community need, doesn't deal with market need, the location. The location.
I'm ready for a motion. Whatever you wanna do. Your pleasure.
Would get more input, please.
Before, I think as part of this, there's some additions. There's some additions in addition to what were listed to staff. I think Laura's been taking down a list of those. It'd be helpful to me to hear what she's sort of identified as additional items that you've talked about as needed and/or that the developer agrees.
Motion and a second to read that.
Well, the discussion...
I'm not sure what those are at this point.
Yeah. I only have one.
Only one?
Commissioner Brown, and that was the chairman's suggestion to add grade and seeding for Lot 2. Were there others that I missed?
These are already in there. They're not additional.
Did you have others that you wanted to discuss?
Well, just, for instance, providing a driveway to the city facility. Was it offered?
That's done as part of the design for that road.
Okay. The trail easement being made for public use, is that already provided?
That will be part of the plating.
That's part of the plat.
25-foot rear setback, maybe that's a questionable one, but shouldn't be a problem given the terrain.
That's a standard that they have to meet anyway.
Okay, all right, so it's just a correction. I admit, revising the drawings to not just show 800 square foot units, even, I mean, I know there's a limit to 300, but the drawings show 800 units specifically.
They, they shouldn't even have the dimensions in terms of 800, 300. The limitation is 300 square feet. So if they do have, it's in error.
Because they do measurements, and they draw pictures of each one. So the drawing would need to be revised, I would think.
The applicant stated that if it's not approved, they will do it at 300, and they'll put regular storage units in there.
The fencing material being identified is iron. The roofing materials, it sounded like some additional specifications were needed, in fact, a standing seam metal roof. And I would suggest that it might be of interest, even though there may be coverage otherwise in the ordinance, the developer agreed to limit the onsite outdoor storage of trucks for rental use to 10.
It's in the ordinance.
It's already in the ordinance.
You can't put a requirement on a requirement. It's actually a...
It's in the ordinance.
It's already there.
I understand that, but okay, I had, people react differently. I understand that, yes.
Fair enough. Looking for a motion?
Okay, I actually think this is one of the more thoughtful projects that's come before the committee. And I would make a motion to approve the conditional use permit in the site plan review, subject to, and I'm simply gonna notate in the package, the two large conditions, each of which have multiple subconditions on pages 11 and 12 in the package, in addition to the chairman's addition, which you will, if you can repeat it right now.
To grade and seed the Phase 2 portion.
Right.
There's two more.
As part of Phase 1.
There's also page 13. So the conditions that are outlined in the package, page 11, 12, and 13, in addition to the chairman's additional recommendation.
I second that motion as stated. Call for the question.
And we'll begin with John DeVoe.
Yes.
Lee Brown.
Yes.
Ellen Kerick.
No.
Vicky Good.
No.
Jerry Penlin.
Yes.
Peter Scanlon.
Yes.
And Charles Schrader.
Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 2.
One, two, three.
Five to 2. Sorry.
Before you all leave.
If I could, if I could just say, no, I'm sorry. Thank you. Great questions. I appreciate the input and the discourse. Thank you very much.
Before you all leave, you got two dates, city council. Okay, the first one is just introducing the ordinance. There might not even be any kind of opinion. The one, I believe, the 19th?
June 7th is the first reading, and July 19th is the second reading.
July 19th is the one that will be a public hearing, that you need to come back if you wanna voice your concerns. You will have a plat by then?
I'm not sure.
Okay. But thanks for coming. This is what our system's all about. Appreciate you taking your aim to do that, okay? Thank you. I think this is one of the better projects that could go there compared to some other things that could go there.
Are you... Are you closing the meeting, Mr. Chair? Are you closing the meeting?
What? No, we're just, we're just taking it all in right now. Okay, we're looking for a motion, wait a minute, reports? Do we have any reports?
Other than you have a meeting on Jul-, June 14th. We plan to have a work session on June 14th regarding the text amendment. So work session on June 14th. No meeting on May 29th, or 28th. Don't know.
Second? All those in favor? Okay, we're outta here. Thanks, folks. Good questions. I literally hate...
I know.